Um, we're with the access by race and ethnicity. Again, white highest, Hispanic population lowest. The, um, the overall workers with lower income and have less paid leave. People of color are less likely to have paid leave. And small employers and lower paying jobs are less likely to have paid leave. In your handout, there's just a couple of, um, slides just for you to reference. This isn't from the report, but in terms of where we stand versus other countries and places with, um, paid maternity leave. So in summary, basically, the, um, the findings were that paid family leave improves infant and maternal health. It improves the health of workers and working families. It improves the use of and appropriate use of health services. It improves the health of families overall, has multiple benefits to employers, protects the health of the community, and is disproportionately unavailable to people of color, American Indians. Low, well, we're not positive about American Indians. Strike that on your thing because we weren't able to do that analysis on this. And low income workers, people of lower levels of education, and employees in small businesses. The benefits of paid leave don't accrue only to the individual and the employees, but to the community and the, uh, at large. So, thank you for the opportunity to share that story.
Thank you. Um, we do have a question from Councilmember Yang, and then I think we will turn right from that to Commissioner Music Hand, who's going to share some information, a short bit of information that is specific to Minneapolis. Uh, Councilmember Yang.
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, I, I don't know if this is the right question for you, Commissioner Ayers, or if it should go to Ms. Music Hand. But, um, with regards to the 208 foodborne illnesses in the state of Minnesota, give a breakdown with regards to Minneapolis?
Yeah, I, I think Gretchen will have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it?
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming and visiting with us. Commissioner Music Hand.
Good morning again. Um, I'm, in the interest of time, I'm going to look through a few of my first one, first slides, uh, quickly. I had an overview of what I was going to cover, um, also outlined which of the goals and values of the city this work relates to. But let's dive right into, um, some examples. Um, I'm going to look, uh, my slides are going to look at two things. The first set are going to look at people who work, um, in Minneapolis. Um, so it isn't about residents, but it's those who work here. And then my, uh, near the end, I'll talk a little bit about people who live in Minneapolis and how they might be impacted. So what I've done is to look through the lens of a few, um, outbreaks that we might know of. Um, back in 2009, 2010, uh, we had a pandemic. We weren't sure how that was going to play out, how dangerous it was going to be. Um, but, um, we were all prepared for something that was going worldwide that was a, a new phenomenon. The advice was to stay home from work, school, and errands when you're sick until 24 hours after your fever subsides, typically five to seven days. These little graphics on the bottom are going to change, and so I'm going to explain it to you. This is the transmission. So the red person has the H1N1, and then the, the, the two black, uh, characters, um, have received it in the first day. So you'll see by day five that if we have not taken any measures, kept people away from each other, it has spread considerably. Among people who work in Minneapolis, an estimated, uh, 133,000 people did not have paid sick leave during the pandemic and so could not easily follow the advice that we were given. The next window I want to look through is Ebola. We didn't have any cases here, um, but it certainly received a lot of public attention as we thought about what was going on in Africa. We have a, a, a West African population that lives here with us, so we were thinking carefully about, um, how to address, um, the situation if it did arrive on our shores. So the, uh, health official recommendation is if a person is at high risk and asymptomatic, that person should be instructed through public health orders, um, that for three weeks they will undergo direct active monitoring, have restricted movement, and not travel on any public conveyance. So I would assume not go to work. Um, you can see the infection in day one of someone exposed, and by day five, you can see how it has spread. One of the groups at highest risk for infection of Ebola, um, are healthcare workers. And so among people who work in Minneapolis, an estimated 15,000 healthcare workers, um, both practitioners and technical workers do not have sick leave, according to some modeling that we, um, applied to Minneapolis that the Health Department had, had used. And so this group includes nurses, certified nursing assistants, technicians, personal care attendants, community health workers, and other frontline health workers. Next is stomach flu, and, um, that relates to what Commissioner Ayers was talking about. Um, we call it norovirus, but a lot of people, when they get it, they say they have the stomach flu, or they got food poisoning. The recommendation is that, um, people are most contagious when they're actively sick and during the first few days after recovery. And so they should avoid preparing food for others while they're sick and for at least three days after the symptoms stop. So you can see this is a little bit more infectious than the, the previous, um, two diseases. And so this is day one. And you can see by day five, we've been able to share that virus quite broadly if no measures were taken to, um, follow the advice. So among people who work in Minneapolis, an estimated 15,000 full-time food preparation and service workers do not have paid sick leave. This number is likely to be much higher because of the amount of part-time work in those fields. So because it is so common, because we have these common words for it, uh, stomach flu, food poisoning, very few outbreaks actually get reported. People are just sick. They just stay home. They don't feel good. But of those that do, you can see here the, um, outbreak investigations in Minneapolis dating back to 2006. Um, these, so these investigations are really only a small portion of probably what is actually happening out there. Most of the restaurants that have been involved in a norovirus outbreak, um, in Hennepin County, are located in Minneapolis. And norovirus outbreaks in restaurants are usually traced to an ill food worker, which is why we have focused on this pathogen. So although the cases of stomach flu are underreported, the CDC estimates that one in six Americans are sick every year, um, as a result of the foodborne infection or food poisoning. And so among Minneapolis residents, and here we're thinking of residents, this translates to about, translates to about 67,000 people. Um, and it does not include the large number of people who come to Minneapolis but don't live here, who come here to eat, or go to school, or do recreational activities, or work. Finally, we're going to look through the lens of measles. Um, and you can see this is most highly contagious. We expect people to be vaccinated for measles, but as we saw in Disneyland, there are pockets of people who are not, and it is highly contagious. The, um, recommendation, the health official recommendation, is that people who have a case of measles should be isolated for four days after you see the rash, and they may return on the fifth day if they're not immunocompromised. Now, the second statement here, I think, is also important as we think about pregnant women and people who have small children. To ensure that susceptible populations, meaning babies under 12 months of age, immunocompromised individuals, and pregnant women, um, if they are exposed to a suspected measles case, they need to be at home for 21 days after being exposed to that case. So, and you can see by day five, how rampant this, uh, spreads if we are not in a situation where we have people who are highly vaccinated, but if it were amongst all exposed, um, or people who are not protected. So among people who work in Minneapolis, an estimated 75,000 low-wage workers do not have access to paid sick leave. This group is likely to include childcare workers, including those who have young infants. Parents who have to keep their children home, or pregnant women who have to stay home in the event of an exposure, may also be included in this low-wage group. So now as we look, um, turn to our, turn our attention to Minneapolis residents, um, we see using the kind of modeling that the State Health Department used, that 59% of Minneapolis residents do not have paid sick leave, and 41% of Minneapolis residents, oh wait, what am I saying? 59% of Minneapolis residents do, do have. There we go. The good news is 59% of Minneapolis residents do have access to paid leave, 41% do not. If we look at private and public sector, we see that in the private sector, 60% of workers have sick leave. Um, in the public sector, 82% have sick leave. And we look across professions, Commissioner Ayers had, Ayers had one of these, um, charts as well. The percentages range here from 84 to 80% for the IT, science, and business leadership sector, to 35% for service jobs, which include those folks who have, uh, a lot of exposure to the public, uh, food preparation and serving, healthcare support, and personal care services. We also see quite a variation in income and paid leave. And so those with the highest pay are most likely to have paid leave, and those with the lowest pay are the least likely. In fact, 85% of workers, um, earning more than 65,000 have paid leave, where only 34% of low-income workers have paid leave. We also see some variation by, um, race and ethnicity, um, with the, um, Hispanic population, um, having the lowest, uh, access to paid leave. So that's my overview for you, um, of the situation related to paid leave, both, um, amongst, um, people who work here and those who live here. Stand for any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. Um, we do have a question from Councilmember Kim Gordon.
I was just curious if any research had been done about the public employee sector that did not have paid sick leave? I noticed on the graph that most, uh, most of them did, but there was definitely a segment that didn't, which also made me then curious to wonder if there are any Minneapolis employees who work for the city who don't have paid sick leave. And you may not know that, but at least I can raise the question.
Yes, Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, I do not know the answer to that, but we will look into that, and I'll send a response to all of you.
Thank you.
And I just had one quick question. So, um, one thing we've, because you had some interesting information in there about, um, kind of risk that relates to food industries, and I know we have heard a lot of comments from, um, business owners and professionals in that industry about, you know, it's just a very highly regulated industry already, where there are a lot of requirements to, uh, keep logs of people who are sick and things like this. And so can you maybe, so I think kind of the question is, if we are already doing all these things, what will happen that's different with paid sick? And, and I don't know if that's fully kind of in your wheelhouse to answer, but I wondered if you could address it a little bit, since you also supervise those who do those inspections.
Correct. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly not every foodborne outbreak is, um, this stomach flu norovirus. Uh, there are things that are, um, that can, are contaminating the food when it comes to us from somewhere else. Um, uh, there are lots of other reasons, but the most common is norovirus. We continue to have outbreaks. People continue to come to work, um, when they're sick, and I, I think regulating alone is not a sufficient. It's, it's important. But if we, um, don't have, if people don't have the opportunity to still pay their rent, um, when they're sick, even if there is a log about whether or not you're sick, um, we're just missing some of the ingredients, I believe, that really would make it more possible, more likely that people would follow the directions that they're being given now.
I guess the other thing I wonder, just from your presentation, if, you know, there are periods of time where even if an employer is really vigilant in trying to identify symptoms, and, and I think, you know, it's kind of the risk of your business. You're, you're doing that, of course, but are there times where, you know, it might be dormant, um, that you're sick, or somehow whatever you have does not show something visibly, or, I, I guess, I'm just trying to understand how that all works out again, because I think business owners care a lot about their business. They don't want people to be in there being sick and risking their business.
Right. Um, Madam Chair, I'm sure all of us have had the experience of, um, getting up in the morning and coming to work, and then halfway through the day, we come down with a cold, or, you know, we start to feel sick to our stomachs. So certainly, we don't always know at the very beginning of every shift, um, how we're going to feel by the end. Um, so that might be part of the phenomenon. Um, I will, um, talk to some of my folks that are working in the field and see if they have other insights and share those with you.
Council President Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, Ms. Music Hand, in this whole discussion of sick stuff, um, one of the things, you know, when you gave your dates of how long you should stay home and all that sort of thing, I think, I mean, realistically, uh, a lot of us, even who have sick leave, come back to work more quickly than we should. And I, I mean, it really is, if you have the flu, that's a long time to take off of work, uh, even if you have sick leave. So I, I wonder how much, is there any, been, been any calculation about how things spread if you come back to work too early? I mean, to take a week off of work because you have the flu, that, that's a big deal for a lot of us.
Yes. Um, Madam Chair, Councilmember Johnson, uh, we are all doing little figures in our head about what we do individually. The cases that I cited, um, H1N1, um, in particular, when it first, um, arrived on the scene, we really didn't know how dangerous or, or not dangerous it was going to be. And so I think, uh, when you have an environment like that, people are more likely to want to follow the letter of the law, um, or the letter of the recommendation, um, than if they are faced with something that feels kind of familiar, and they have a sense of how bad it's going to be for someone else to get this thing too. Um, so yeah, human nature is involved, um, but the things that I cited are, um, you know, on the extreme end, and I think, um, deserve a special warning from public health officials, but then we also have to realize it's really hard to follow those directions unless you have, um, the security of, of paid leave.
So we have two people in queue, and I'm going to ask if at 11 o'clock, which is about five minutes away, we might be able to turn to the, um, scheduling portion, just so we have a chance to hear that presentation too. So, Councilmember Gordon, did you?
I did. I, uh, something else occurred to me when you were discussing about restaurants in particular, um, and I'm just curious, we have, we would have the authority if we went into a restaurant and we saw a server or a cook looked obviously sick, um, and contagious, to tell the, uh, the business that that person had to go home, wouldn't we?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, yes.
Okay. And so we sometimes probably do that, not knowing whether or not they get paid and they are sent home.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, one of the things we hear back the most from businesses in the discussions that we've had about paid sick time is about a concern of employees abusing their sick time off. And I just wondered if you could talk more about that and respond to that question that we've been hearing a lot about.
Um, Madam Chair, Councilmember Bender, I didn't really do specific research into that question. I think part of people's use of sick time is something that managers of people need to attend to. I, I, I know in my past, I've managed people who have patterns of using sick time Mondays and Fridays, and, um, oftentimes when I would bring that up, um, even though it felt uncomfortable to bring it up, uh, you'd find out that there's something else going on, there's some stress in the family, there's, you know, something that maybe you can coach someone to have a different approach to that. But I think the other thing to remember is, uh, what, um, Assistant Commissioner Ayers showed us, this counterintuitive finding, that people are actually less likely to use more than six days of sick leave if they have paid leave. So, um, we certainly all have, have stories in one direction, but there's some data shows the other phenomenon is true as well.
Well, thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Music Hand. Um, I think we're going to turn to our next part of the study session and invite Ms. Mays up to introduce our next speaker, please.
Thank you. We are fortunate to have with us today, um, Dr. Susan Lambert. I'm going to give a brief bio and then turn it over to her for a presentation. Um, Dr. Lambert is an associate professor of the School of Social Service Administration at the University of Chicago. Her fields of special interest include lower skilled jobs and low-wage workers, work-life issues, and organizational theory and management. I want to say that we've noted that we, among, she's not just a professor in this, she's one of our national expert on this, and is one of the few workers that's really focusing on the work side of work-life balance. Central to her research is examining whether it's possible to create a better model for work for both hourly low-wage workers and employers. Her research includes field experiments and hands-on work with businesses to explore options around alternative scheduling. At this point, I'll turn it over to her.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Lambert. And did she need any help with her presentation, or? All right. Often it's helpful just to have another set of hands, I do know, so. Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Good morning, everyone, and, uh, thank you so much for inviting me here today, and everyone back here as well. I want to start with, um, just acknowledging, uh, my colleague Julia Henley for two reasons. One is that we've collaborated, collaborated a lot on our research, and she was born and raised in Minneapolis.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I also want to start with just saying, what is the empirical basis for what I'm going to talk about today? Uh, I have been studying scheduling practices for over 25 years in a variety of different industries. I also, um, look at how those practices affect workers, and my focus is on the employer side mostly. Why do employers do what they do? And then how that matters for workers. I've also been involved in doing some randomized experiments where we work with, partner with employers to try to improve scheduling practices. And we now, I'm going to also draw on some national data that we have, that are new national data, that tell us about the prevalence of problematic scheduling practices in the labor market today. So I'm just going to go through three ideas today, and I'm going to do them pretty fast because I know it's 11 o'clock. Uh, one is the business and policy context behind problematic scheduling practices, and I think it's really important for people to have some understanding of that, because otherwise it's very difficult to know what is feasible, feasible, and what is reasonable to ask a business and what isn't. I'm then going to talk about what is some evidence that it is feasible to ask employers to improve scheduling practices. And then I'm going to end with just some considerations that I offer to you all as you develop your ordinance, um, further. So the business and policy context. U.S. firms are increasingly adopting business models that emphasize cost containment as a route to profitability. And when businesses have this kind of model, and it's quite widespread, uh, payment for labor that exceeds very narrow definitions of demand, like the number of customers, the amount of sales, the number of rooms in a hotel that are currently filled, the number of flights going up, the number of tables where there are diners right now, that labor beyond that is often viewed as an unnecessary expense. And so what employers try to do is to control tho- those costs through accountability mechanisms. And we see this across industries. So in retail, for example, those frontline managers doing scheduling will be held to maintain in a particular ratio between sales or traffic and then the number of hours that are used. In hotels, you get so many housekeepers for so many rooms. Um, in restaurants, um, work that my colleague, Anna Haley Locke, has done, uh, she follows and she looks at how managers then monitor, you know, food sales and the flow of customers through the day, um, to have that drive how many people you have in your, your restaurant. And I want to emphasize that increasingly that these numbers are, um, are closely monitored. In some bigger employers, they're literally monitored every 15 minutes. Um, and often, even if they're not monitored, but often, even informally, people in restaurants are sitting there counting the number of tables, looking at who's coming in and deciding whether or not to send people home. Why this intense monitoring of, um, work hours in hourly jobs? Well, it's because labor costs in hourly job, in, in jobs paid by the hour, especially part-time jobs, are mostly variable costs. That means that they're incurred per hour of work rather than per employee. Health insurance is more of a, at least a quasi-fixed cost. You know, if you're a full-time worker, you get, you know, health insurance, um, or if you earn, you know, you have the status of working a certain number of hours now underneath our new healthcare law. But in hourly jobs, first of all, only about 16% of part-time hourly workers get health insurance through their employer. So most of the costs for most, especially in part-time jobs, are variable costs. Wages are only paid if somebody works an hour, employers' contributions to social security, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation. All of those are incurred as a percentage of wages paid. No wages, no taxes, no cost. And businesses, um, are, often take the form then of limiting those variable costs, and they do that by limiting wage rates, and they do it by limiting the number of hours that are distributed among their, their workers. And right now, we have very few, if any, policy restrictions on variable costs. We have minimum wage legislation that provides a floor on hourly wages, but we have no minimum hour legislation. There, there is no real floor on hours. And so managers face few incentives and few pressures to concentrate hours on individual workers or to schedule them for consistent hours, and, and they face these enormous pressures to keep labor flexible. And I just want to focus on two of their several strategies, but two of the strategies that they use to keep labor flexible. And those are scheduling practices and headcount. So accountability requirements that require managers basically to stay within hours make managers really weary of assigning hours to workers. They're afraid of going over hours, of not meeting their ratios, or however their industry calculates the relationship between demand and, um, labor. And fear drives a lot of this practices, of these practices, and with good reason. You know, bonuses are often based on maintaining that right ratio. Your manager is calling you during the day if they think you're going to go over it. Uh, and often managers are rewarded for using fewer hours than they could have. So it leads managers to post-work schedules at the last, you know, just a few days before the work week, in fear, you know, that they, there might be a dip in demand that wasn't anticipated, to make adjustments if demand, um, seems to be exceeding, and especially if it seems to be disappointing, you know, expectations. And that constant vigilance to demand to labor ratios, or however the, you know, the, the metric is that is used, means that there's often these real-time adjustments are being made during the day, with workers being sent home or brought in, others being asked to extend their shifts later than it was, was scheduled. And how does that matter to workers? Well, this is a, one, a picture of one store in one of our studies. Uh, we have over 100 comparable pictures, and each line is a worker, and these are the number of hours that the workers worked from week to week during the last half of, of 2012. And these are hard numbers. These are from the firm's payroll system. And you notice, there's no straight line here. Uh, now consider this volatility in hours in the context that workers at this firm only know their work schedule a few days before the work week. You know, I know that a lot of people are worried about predictability turning into rigidity, but frankly, from what we see, we have a long way to go before that is a pressing concern. And the right-to-request kind of provisions help very much mollify, I think, those concerns. There's a couple more stores that you can see all across, uh, 2012, and, you know, and it seems if your hours are going to vary that much, wouldn't it be very useful to know what your schedule's going to be more than a few days in front of the work week? And that's certainly what research shows. And that's certainly what research shows. That advance notice, steady work hours, input into the timing of when you work, that those matter for work-life outcomes and worker well-being. Schedule unpredictability and instability are related to high levels of stress, greater work-to-family conflict, interferences between your non-work activities and scheduling doctor's appointments, socializing with friends, eating meals together as a family. And for parents, of course, arranging reliable childcare and doing basic routines such as monitoring homework. Another tool that managers use to keep labor flexible is to keep headcount high. That's the number of workers on the payroll, especially in part-time jobs, so that managers then have a pool of workers to draw on to work short shifts during peak business hours. And firms can do this because it really doesn't cost them anything to do that. The costs, remember, those costs are variable. You don't use the hours, you don't pay taxes. It doesn't cost you anything to keep somebody's name on the schedule. And we see over and over again in firms in many different industries that often people are scheduled for no hours, for long periods of time, even though they're technically an employee. What are the implications of high headcount for workers? Well, because managers are responsible for staying in with hours, and those hours, how many hours you get is driven by demand, not by how many workers on your payroll, that often there are more employees than there are hours to go around. And we see the ramifications of this in national data. We see growing rates of involuntary part-time employment. And we also see it in poverty. So these are poverty rates among working families in the U.S., and working families are